We're now recording and live. So, welcome to the fifth annual town meeting of Bingley Town Council. Oh, Bingley Parish in fact, it's your opportunity to talk to us. Pity there's not that many people here and I guess we need to review how we advertise the meeting at a later date. But you will recall that last year's meeting was on Zoom and there was about thirty odd people on it. The year before it was cancelled because of Covid and the year before in person it was fifty-two people. So things have gone downhill a spiral so we need to arrest that, I think. But we're back to normal now in person. So, moving on to the review of the last year. Litterpigs were the first ones back in the world and they've been very successful at the moment. We believe we may have got them on top of the historical issues now in Bingley and can start to change people's mindset about this issue. My thanks go to everyone involved in litterpicking across the parish and I include all the community groups that operate similar ventures in those things. A few things have happened over the last year. We've added additional Christmas lighting around the parish and more Christmas trees. Gilstead had a Christmas tree last year and I believe Albert's having one this year. And additional equipment has been purchased and supported too. We established a working room to put in place a new changing place toilet to complete the provision of public toilets for all of the townspeople. It is anticipated this new facility will be open in the next two months. We also have information about changing places here tonight, but that's from the members of the changing place working room. But I guess Helen knows more about it and the two ladies from the community groups can ask if they want to. We continue to provide a Monday farmers market on the first Saturday of every month, but the late customer numbers are falling. And as a council, we're looking at what we can do to stimulate more interest in it. But ultimately, this is like all retail offerings that follow the old adage, use it or lose it. And I know councillor Curda is on the case with Bingley markets and more of that to come, I guess. We provided play at the park events through our Sunday Wester Parish and are again providing them this year. And we hope that once again they're successful and the weather was kind to us. In January, we agreed a sizable percentage device on the precept to allow us to provide services and undertake projects this year. The budget's on the website and we'll be happy to answer questions related to it. However, it is important to note that this is a small financial increase as the precept has been substantially blown down by labouring towns. Our precept in Bingley is twenty-seven point seventy-nine per bandee house. Other local precepts for this year are Shipley forty-five point twenty-five, Valemore forty-eight point eighty-three, Keithley forty-eight point eleven and Elkhley forty-seven point eleven, all for bandee houses. You might wonder why I've got that in there with all the councils knowing that information, but I did expect an audience to be here and was occasioned by a speech to do that. There's it going up on YouTube, I'll be telling it anywhere. Among the subjects in YouTube, all our formal meetings are now recorded and posted on YouTube and this one is no different. You can see the calendar in front of us. The official record of the meeting remains the minutes, but the council YouTube channel enables our community to watch the meeting itself. We did hope to bring this to you in real time, but it's really dependent on the performance of local Wi-Fi and internet facilities. However, the recordings are published very quickly after the meeting ends. As always, we have seen changes to councils this year. Councillor Mick Taylor, councillor Raynard, Joanne Raynard, councillor John Pennington, councillor Helen Owen resigned. We have councillors Lewis Curda, councillor Morwin Carney, councillor Ross Dawson and councillor Andrew Fenton elected new councillors to join us. We have three new staff to introduce you to tonight, well, in fact, two. Eve Haskins has done new town clerk and she's aided and supported by Nicola Mansfield-Smith as deputy town clerk. We have Ruth Thompson in the background as our administrative officer. They've all introduced during last year's annual report, but here's an opportunity to meet them here in person. The next full council meeting on May the 31st is preceded by the annual council meeting at which the chair of the council, members of the committees and working groups will be elected. We are entering the last seven years of this council in two weeks' time, so I'm going to take this opportunity to thank all those councillors and members of the public too who have served on the council's sub-meads and working groups. I also thank those who attended tonight for their interest in the work of Bingley Town Council and to those who have come to show the work of their community group who have received grants by way of the council's products scheme. And I thank them for their efforts, not just tonight, but across the years. So tonight we have Five Eyes Fox, Boozers Stupe and Friends of Myrtle Park. So, there's my welcome address and the next point on the agenda is to note the apologies for absence. So I know we had one from councillor Fenton and...
And councillor Dawson and councillor Mia.
Okay, do we need to pass the ground as a formal meeting?
Yes.
Okay, excuse me, ladies, a bit of formality to undergo. Oh, we can send it on that one here. It's a bit of formality for the reasons that the apology is confidential in the book, but the person apologising is public, so. Okay, so may I have a proposal for councillor Ross Dawson's absence, please? Proposed by councillor Good, seconded by councillor Barrow, all in favour of the section now? Thank you. May I have a proposal for Andrew Fenton, please, working away? Councillor Hesseltine, seconded by councillor Trimmer, all those in favour? And you know us, thank you. And last but not least councillor Mia, proposed by councillor Hesseltine, seconded by councillor Raynard, all those in favour? So that concludes that formality. The next item is to approve the minutes of the annual town meeting held on June 4th, away 2021. I guess you were there, haven't you? As a chairman. So is anyone else there who has any comments on the minutes? Or shall we propose an acceptance or a free approval?
I propose acceptance, chair.
Seconded by councillor Clough, so all those in favour of acceptance of minutes? One, two, three, four, five, six. Those against, none, those abstaining, no mention, so those are passed, thank you very much. So that confirms the formal business of the annual town meeting. Now we're onto presentations by local organisations acting in the union of the union. So as I say, we have two here, so which group would you like to go first? Andrew Fenton, councillor Barrow or Five Eyes Fox?
I'm going to go first, because this is professional, I can answer first.
Okay.
Hello everybody, Angie Robinson, resident of Five Eyes Fox Institute. I also know the gardening group called Bingley Bumbers. We've been looking after the market square along the stone in the north side. We've got the planters and the poga and anyone a little bit of land with a bit of care of it, I'd like to check that one as well.
Do you want to come and have a benefit at the moment?
Please do, actually, because my...
Yeah, it might be good.
Why is she doing wrong for that?
I just wanted to get a G P about the...
I can see that.
So we met in Wednesday morning at the market square and one day last October I was looking around for something to do and I noticed the Jubilee Gardens stone. You can read the Jubilee Gardens in gold, you couldn't read what this description said. I tried to decipher, I managed to read it, said that the whole area outside the house had to be landscaped in nineteen-seventy silver jubilee by Bradford Council and Bradford Bingley North side. And so lost them, it didn't seem quite significant to have noted up the history really. So I spoke to the gardeners, I thought it was a really good idea and I said, this is the Queen's Jubilee this year, it's really timely to get it done. So I thought those two of us standing over there, I was going to be, we're not allowed to touch it, then we're told we can't afford it. So I emailed Brad Jackson at Bradford Council and eventually he answered me and he said, yes, I can go ahead, but please get professional. But in fact, I would have gone down the avenue and just interviewed someone, not quite sure what, but anyway, possibly get professional. So then I took it to my committee and they said, well, for it was a good idea, it was very timely to do it. How much was it going to cost next summer? I contacted Elvis Malores, who I was familiar with, they quoted me, it was about £200 to be clean and about £600 to have it re-gilded and £800 to have a second and then a message to say we refurbish the estate to twenty-two. We decided that £800 would cover the re-gilded and our new message. So then I took it to our members and our members voted for it, only two abstaining, only two said, well, just let me refurbish this house. Everybody else wants to have, we should have reached an agreement, we should speak to each other. So then it was that question. We did win a nice round of applause and we didn't see the government, it was up to the seven banks in the law, it was a long way to go. Then to pick back the left hander that to the second market in March, there was a hundred twenty-one and twenty-two in March, it was really encouraging. We also got some others to help the public, that's been the key in this situation. So, um, like, if we hear this by a house, we could cause. A lot of people didn't stand there, a lot of people didn't know it was called Jubilee Gardens. So it came in the courts again. One or two town councils came to speak as a budget for the private grant, so we had that in the back of our mind as well. And we shall Pat Chapman came to speak and says, I think the Bingley businesses should get behind you. So that was also a story in that head as well. Before that week, so we had £200 from Chamber of Trade, £50 from the Lounge Cafe and £200 from the Loft Cafe. So all of a sudden, we go out three parts of the way and they're absolutely astonishing apart from Bingley, we appreciate that. Very welcome. Then we came to our fundraiser, we had a craft, a little craft resources sale Saturday morning in April at Lincoln House, which was about sixty pounds. And we did Easter egg tumblow on the Friday at the Moustiques, that we have took about ninety-five pounds. So just short of being there. So we travelled up our next fundraiser and then, well, we go, Bingley Town Council gives £250. Took us to home house, twenty-three pounds or twenty-five pounds. So the excess money has bought a plum tree called a Jubilee Plum, which we planted last Monday. Steve was there as well, that was with the young veteran in the store. And the rest of the money is going to make a sign to fund all these people to go with the plum tree. And I want to notice one of the backfill that grew and you have a look at the flower after the Jubilee pictures etc. And I want to ask you the questions right through, please do. Yeah, thank you, for the support.
Thank you, welcome. I've just remembered, I'm sorry, I just remembered that you wanted to speak about the members service. You've got a book on, are you prepared for that?
Yeah.
Okay, so do you want to come up or should I... Can you hear me here?
Right, good evening everybody, I'm Lindsay Bennett, I'm secretary of Friends of Myrtle Park, so I'm presenting tonight on behalf of the committee. I did a little PowerPoint presentation, which unfortunately people in the room can't see. So you'll have to put your imaginations forward and then picture all the pretty pictures that we're going to show you. I'll see you all tomorrow online afterwards. So I'm here tonight, so thank you very much for your support and for the two grants that we've had this last year. So we had grants from the Community Infrastructure Levy for nine thousand three hundred and four pounds, which is for the refurbishments of our park up and then also £360 for the history board that's on the wall next to the park up. So the silver money was used to refurbish the park up, which was originally the veterans hut. So it was the hut for a veterans bowling club and they used it, it was basically that bowling club. They bowled in summer and then in the winter they made jigsaws, played darts, played dominoes and fridge inside the hut. But if any of you recall, before we had the refurbishments, it was looking a bit sorry for itself. So rusty grills, rotting windows, paint was peeling, cracks in the brickwork. The windows kept getting smashed at the back, so it was a bit of a sorry state. Inside, it was quite dark and damp, very old furniture and upholstery. Around the whole room was this big bench that had a lot of room in there. And it's very cramped and dark. So the picture that I'm showing now is actually the external refurbishments. So we also need to thank Bradford Council because they paid for the external refurbishment, which was replacing the ballroom windows and the grills and they made the single doors into a large double door for us for better access. So we're really grateful for that and that also placed sort of March, April time last year. So that happened before the internal refurbishments. So I'm showing a nice picture now of the before and aftershocks. So it looks a lot more welcoming and much brighter, looks clean, looks ideal, it's very inviting to the public. So I thank Bradford Council for the exterior refurbishments. And then, yes, in terms of the inside, basically the ground was used to completely strip it back. So the carpet was removed, the whole bench and the roof was removed, all the walls were stripped back to break. And then unfortunately, we found a problem down in the bottom left-hand corner of the chapel. The person who's doing the refurbishment was the manager of Cawton Sons and he managed to lean on a floorboard and pushes his hand right through. So it turned out the floorboards in that corner, bottom, as well as several of the joists. So all of a sudden, we had this huge extra job of, we need to replace this whole flooring in order to carry on with it. So what we did is we talked to the council, the cost of repairing the floor was £1,200. And we'd put that money in the grant towards the history board. So we asked if we could transfer those ones from the history board to pay for the flooring works to take place, which he kindly granted, so then work was taken to continue. So all that flooring was done. And it was a big job, if you can see the pictures here, which you can't in the room, but it was, I think John probably saw it at the time.
We can look afterwards, wouldn't we?
Yeah, yeah. It was a big job. So the front half of the hut is the original half of the building, that's actually a stone floor, but the back half is an extension, I think, for some reason, and that was all wooden floor. So we're really pleased with what Cawton Sons did because they tried to keep in character with the building. So the wooden bench that went all the way around, they took and reused lots of that wood. And they really nicely boxed in the window sections to sort of make window seats. So they did it really tastefully and at the end they did a really nice job on the refurbishment. So that went from sort of springtime through, I don't know, I can't remember exactly how long it worked, or maybe months. We had to wait a little bit for the flooring to put down, so we've got a really nice laminate flooring, really bright white walls, it all looks really clean, really welcoming, really airy. So we're really happy with the space. Some of the money was also used to buy some display boards. So we've got three big display boards on the wall. We've got freestanding gallery display system, they're called, so we can carry those outside when we're this good. And some of you have seen that, we've been able to put those outside. And also two knee feet stands as well. So we've got a lot of information from local community groups that were advertising there. The displays at the moment are talking about the history of the park, what the park meant to people in the pandemic. There's a selection of old postcards, which the older population would like coming in and seeing and looking back at the history of the park, all these old postcards. We've also got a little homage to the bowling clubs, that we have a bowling display with some of their own trophies and bowling balls and small pictures from their competitions. And also a children's corner, which has been really popular, so we've got lots of books. Books for far kids, their kids can take them out on loan and walk around the park trying to find books. Coloring in for them, so there's lots of things they can do, but hoping also to build that up over time as well. So since we actually opened the hub last October, we've actually had over three hundred visitors, all the users, I count them all up these days, which is fantastic. As well as ourselves, Friends of Myrtle Park, the other users of the park run. Action stations have helped with their meetings there. Bingley Glen Bowling Club next door used it for their radio. We had a jazz group who were hopefully going to maybe do a little sort of concert for us or Beyond the Sea. Bingley Bells used it just this last weekend, gone for their cycling event. And there'll also be an information day for this new Bingley lens shed that's being formed. So a couple of the comments we've had, it's great to see it being used again by new people and the space looks so much fresher, so much fresher than it began. Action stations, their Friends of Myrtle Park have been kind enough to let us host our action stations meetings for free at the hub. It's been invaluable as Covid restrictions are being lifted and members are still nervous of groups and confined spaces. The building is light, open and airy and we were able to spend very well, I can confirm. So I've heard some really positive comments about it, it's really the best of the transformation. And we used it, we used it with the public, kind of pretty much for the first time. The first event was our Easter trail, Cindy the tenth of April from eleven to two. We had a fantastic response to this event. I couldn't believe how many families came, it was a beautiful day, which helps, but we had a public thing, fifty children, families in total, or total number of people. And the hub was used for the crafts, so the families would go around the park on the Easter trail and then when they'd finished, they'd come to the hub and they would make Easter hats in there. It's a fantastic space for that, we can have the doors wide open, it's nice and airy. Yeah, so we were really pleased with that. And then after that, we had our official opening, at which Johnny and I clearly cut the ribbon. So that occurred right after that event. And that was attended by, we invite everybody who's supported us and donated to us over the last three years. So we invite everybody to say thank you for their support of that. And then the history board, so yeah, there was £1,200 in the silver grant that we were going to use towards the history board and as I said, it went towards the repairs of the floor instead. So then we needed to ask for some extra money to pay with the history board. For our welcome boards, we went in a share of signs, but we didn't have the best experience with them. So we decided we'd try and design this one ourselves. So Rosie Sharp, our chairwoman, her husband Richard, they actually made, they actually did the design. We had a lot of help from Jean, thank you Jean, and also Val and Cat, with the content. And the board was printed by Jesterite Graphics and actually only cost us £360. So we funded the town council about money that we didn't spend. But it's been fantastic for those people stopped to look at it on the side of the web. We really like everything, it's really very good, really pleased with it. So yeah, just to finish, on behalf of the committee, which is Gayle, Moira, Rosie, Joy and Martin Altrecher, just like to say thank you very much again.
Yes. To my amazement, I've been married thirty-five years, my wife started running two years ago and was gone, just under thirty, part runs now. There's some thought that some of the track rounds should be improved, possibly with a grant from Sport England. Have you heard about that or any discussion about that?
Only the path along the river, we've heard.
Yes, I think that's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
She's always complaining about running up a hill, it's muddy as well, I think.
I've done it a few times and it is a bit, yeah. I know, yes, I know Catherine and Steve were looking into putting some sort of surface down to go around the meadow, which was also, which would also help people, mobility scooters, wheelchairs, push chairs, also goes around meadow. But obviously it's got to be something that's, you know, tarmac probably isn't appropriate for the park, but something...
Some other material.
Yes, some material that also wouldn't get washed away if it flops.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lindsay. Morwin, do you want to say a few words or...
Okay, so we formed Bingley River Bridge Group in 2019 to take over the organisation and running of the parade service after it was announced that the Bingley branch of the Royal British Legion would be closing and that subsequently meant that there would be no more organisation or aid for the parade in Bingley. So basically, the only way that it was going to continue is if somebody took it over. And a small group of us decided that it was something that we couldn't lose in the town because it became more and more popular as the years have gone on, which I think some people find a bit strange really, but you know, ten, fifteen years ago, we maybe had two or three hundred people lost who turned up and it was just mainly because of the recent, obviously, conflicts, people feeling more and more that they needed to attend these gatherings. So we didn't want it to close or we didn't want it to end. And we've now run it on two occasions, 2019 and 2021. We did one last year, obviously, because of the pandemic, we were just allowed on a small avenue on the day because they'd cancelled nationally. And both occasions, we've asked for a grant from Bingley Town Council, they've been kind, you had to one, £500 on both occasions. That's really important because the organisation and cost of the parade is quite extensive and there's only a small group of us to do fundraising and put everything together. We've always gone on a previous model of the RBL used, which does involve using a choir and two bands, parade band, a band at the centre and a choir. And we think that, yeah, okay, for some people, I think that's quite a lot, but we do think that that's what adds to the service and the way that it comes across to people. It just seems to make it a bit more special. So we've intended to keep on with that. Now, last year, because of the pandemic, we didn't have a great deal of fundraising because local businesses were really generous and needed it for. But obviously, the pandemic hit quite a few of those people. You know, we had a local business who often paid for the P A system, which is several hundred pounds, but that just wasn't possible. So the grants that we got from the town council and all the local brands, really, really, when they could go ahead again. Last year, we estimated between fifteen and seventeen hundred people in attendance and we saw a really marked increase in the number of children taking part.
How many people, say?
Between fifteen and seventeen hundred people. That's just estimation. But what we had was that we seemed to have everywhere in Bingley, every gathering, they want to turn up, every scout, every cook, which was really, really good to see, especially after what, you know, gone on in the past, people being a bit reluctant to come out. So I think, you know, it just sort of really did evolve over the future. We also had an increasing veterans taking part and another school and that's what we intend to do this year, expand that again and involve more schools and try and encourage more veterans to take part in the parade or to stand at the centre of the ground and just attend you. So we want to make it a bit more inclusive for people who it really matters to and to keep it going forward. So again, every fundraiser's again and again, you know, we may need to come and ask the town council about it again because it does cost nearly £2,000 to put around. But it could have gone ahead in those two years since the Royal British Legion closed if it wasn't for what we'd been managing by now. So we'd just like to say thanks very much to everyone in terms of every year and thank you to the council for the help.
Sorry, a question, do you have a band?
We don't have a band, no, we use, we use two bands, so we use Hot Air and we use the Spen Valley Band.
Okay, because there are two high schools in town, I don't know whether they have music bands, but if they do, they might be interested in joining.
Yeah.
And that engages young people that...
It does, yeah, I mean, the Spen Valley Band have been involved for several years and they are the first to back them. I know they're not local, but they've always been part of the service. So I suppose it's just one of those things that they will evolve as it goes along.
I didn't attend in 2019, but I did in 2021 and it was really impactful. It was really well done, a number of people attended this great, but the organisation that you have managed there is really quite impressive. So I know that, like, it's not even just people in Bingley, my meeting, they do, they're, well, now they're six and eight. They're out in Miss Morton, they came along, so it's... they're out there in Morton, they came along, so it's, it's, it sounds a bit strange to say, it's almost like a destination thing that you're managing, very impressive, so thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
Okay, is there's nothing else for Mark? Says on the agenda, open forum, an opportunity for informal networking, so what I suggest we do is... Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot this question. Has this been passed now? Okay, so it comes to you, looking at a letter from Bingley Lytham Theatre, who received a grant from us in 2021 for performers' lives. Basically, the halogen talent converted to A and Ds, I was able to say that, confirmed they're there, but they were, so that's good. I'm not going to read it out unless you think it's a photo of the clock, or the YouTube, the YouTube isn't the official web page, the official web page is at the minute, so I guess, have you three ladies in the audience got a copy? And I would suggest we pick you up with a copy of this.
I think they're on the chairs, I'm actually...
Take that. Well, we can pick that up in the old chairs, I guess. Yeah, so what I'm going to do is thank Bingley Lytham Theatre for their letter to us, and record it in the next episode, we see with it, and close the meeting, and then have to pan it up for open networking, so I'll leave the PC up here for Lindsay to show you the slides I didn't get to see, stop the recording, and then we can look at the display at the back from Jim, and we can talk tomorrow about the venue service.
Just, I bet you, Lindsay, I'm sure that it's out there, it's on your Facebook page, and all the stuff that will be on that presentation.
I can fill the presentation up, yeah.
I say, if anybody wants to see it, I say we have to, we'll access it.
Yeah. It's going to be on the YouTube channel, I think it's not...
I don't...
It's going to be on the YouTube channel.
Yes, councillor...
Can I just say that we've had three fantastic presentations from all of the groups, and it just reminds me what good parish councils and town councils can do with, by, through their grant schemes, and I think that if, I think it's probably, when we think about all the things we do, one of the most impactful things we do is giving these smallest grants to various community organisations, which make our town and our environment a better place to be in, so I think, you know, I think it's a really, really good example of that.
And I, I think, I mean, for example, I've had, of course, that's the village society I'm going to do today, asking the thing, I think it's really important that really town council continues to engage with these community groups, you know, the village society, et cetera, et cetera. I know we don't fill the plant scheme, but if we can keep liaising with them and letting them know, I mean, this particular issue was that Bradford Council had taken some planters and dumped them, not dumped them, placed them strategically in cross flats, and started to remove their plants. I think this is, we discussed this at last, liaison between Bradford Council and ourselves, if Bradford Council could let us know when some of these things were going on, it helped a bit, that would be...
Can I just add, sorry, I should have said it in my mind, that town council have just made contributions financially, we also have a little pick every council's come along and do a little pick of the town.
Oh, the memorial services.
Much appreciated, as well.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
And if it's on YouTube, I'd like to find a call that turns up at eight o'clock in the morning, and we stop for two hours to do the pick. We really do know that's part of our...
Yeah.
...on board, on board.
I think while we're still on YouTube, I think we need to do a bit of night work in the background, we have this idea of a town meeting, and I'll know Lewis is raising the reservation of the events marketing and communications subcommittee. Yes, Lewis?
What a wonderful segue, segue to that. Yeah, I think today is the perfect exhibition, really, of why the EMAC would be a good thing to resurrect. Clearly, we've not done a great job in marketing today. It's all well and good feeling annoyed that residents happen to end up, but we need to try and ask that question, why, as you said? What are we not doing well enough to make people interested enough in what we're doing? What can we do better? And I think that the EMAC would be a valuable thing to bring back, and any councillors who are interested in helping me write an hour and hour on that, you would be welcome, because I don't think I'm very good at writing an hour and hour, so if someone could help me, that would be great.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the draw meeting is formally closed, and I'll set up the laptop on, so Lindsay can get some opportunity to display her PowerPoint slides, and we'll say goodnight, and look forward to seeing as many of these people here, and hopefully some of you at the annual general meeting, which is on the thirty-first of May. So thank you very much.